The top one is the war line.
Aaron Necker.
Oh, they gave these scores.
I'm hanging in there. Bit of a run. How you been? Good?
So far, so good. How about you?
Hello. Hello.
Yes, man, come on.
Hey, Candace, how you doing? Well, I'm gonna, I'll have to start.
You play Toki. The mayor says Toki.
Oh, here we go, it's 5:30. The appointed time of 5:30, having arrived, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands a one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to call this Tuesday, November 9th, meeting of the Committee of the Hold order. Clerk, can you please take the roll?
Will do.
Thank you.
Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Folgenzie. Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman D'Essenzo.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman. Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donilon.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Madam Chair, a form is present.
Thank you. Can I have an approval of the Tuesday, October 26th, committee meeting minutes?
Move.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to the Treasurer's Report. Madam Treasurer?
Thank you, Chair Conley. The Corporate Fund in the month of October had a beginning balance of $42,258,899. We took in total receipts of $11,618,107. We had total disbursements of $11,796,388, which left the Corporate Fund with an ending balance in the month of October of $42,080,618. Chair Conley, of that current ending balance, the balance of the ARPA funds included in that, would be $15,202,700 to date. Thank you, Chair Conley. This concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for the Treasurer tonight?
Accept and approve.
Second.
Any, any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Moving on, we, everyone's gotten a copy of the Office of Budget Management Contract Report. Are there any questions on that tonight? Seeing none? We have no presentations, so we move to ordinances tabled or remaining in committee. Clerk Lesko, can you, well, does anyone have any movement on any of these ordinances to being held in committee?
2021-336, 2021-337, 2021-365, 2021-370, 2021-371.
Are there any questions for any one of these? Any action tonight? Okay, moving on to ordinances for committee consideration.
CWLP, 2021-437, an ordinance authorizing a one-year contract extension and additional funding in an amount of $35,000 under contract number UW20-07-43, wood chipping and disposal at Lake Services Maintenance Division with Rex D. Evans, AKA Evans Carthage, for a total amount payable not to exceed $105,000 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second. Now, debate.
Okay, motion for debate?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, on to debate.
2021-438, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE22-09-51, rental of heavy equipment with Altorfer Incorporated, CCPS Rentals Incorporated, Herc Rentals Incorporated, Martin Equipment Development Illinois Incorporated, Roland Machinery Company, Sunbelt Rentals Incorporated, Tiles &amp; Style LLC, doing business as Taza Supplies, and Vermeer Sales and Service of Central Illinois Incorporated, for a total maximum amount not to exceed $300,000 for the Office of Public Utilities and the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion for a second, and motion in a second for consent. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
2021-439, an ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for purchase of sale of real estate with Bio Petro Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $10,000 in closing costs in the amount of $500 for a total amount not to exceed $10,500 for parcel number 22-12.0-127-045 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
Move to second for consent. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
2021-440, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a manhole support trailer from Synergy Power Group LLC in an amount not to exceed $57,288 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion in second for consent. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
2021-441, an ordinance authorizing additional funding in an amount not to exceed $57,854 with Toshiba America Energy Systems Corporation for the repairs to valves and cartridges at Unit 4, for a total amount not to exceed $105,154 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion, second for consent. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
2021-442, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of inventory items for the pulverized located in Unit 4 from Wood Group USA Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $74,064 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion in second for consent. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Public Works, 2021-443, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of rock salt from Tempest Minerals America Incorporated, under state contract number 22-416-CMS-BOSS4-B-24795, in an amount not to exceed $456,336 for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion in second for consent. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
2021-444, an ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for purchase of sale of real estate with Christopher Bell, in an amount not to exceed $49,000 in closing costs in the amount of $1,500, for a total amount not to exceed $50,500 for property located at 2340 South Sixth Street.
Move to consent.
Second.
Motion in second for consent. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
2021-445, an ordinance authorizing relocation expenses in the amount of $3,000 for personal property located at 2340 South Sixth Street.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion in second for consent. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
2021-446, an ordinance approving the plan for the large-scale development of Twill Ridge for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent. Second.
Motion in second for consent. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
General City Business, 2021-447, an ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for purchase of leasehold interest from the Perry State Bank and Trust, for old Marina properties to be used for wildlife preserve, in an amount not to exceed $375,000.
Move for consent. Second.
Motion in second for consent. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Present.
Noted.
Okay. Ayes have it, with one present.
2021-448, an ordinance approving a tentative bargaining agreement with Mid-America Regional Carpenter's Regional Council, Union Number 270, FKA, United Brotherhood of Carpenters and Joiners of America, Local Union Number 270, Ad Mid-Central Illinois Regional Council of Carpenters, from October 1st, 2021 through September 30th, 2026.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion in second for consent. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
2021-449, an ordinance authorizing payment of $28,113.29 to Greg Vandy, an Office of Public Works employee, to settle a workman's compensation claim for case number 21-WC-10180.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion in second for consent. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
2021-450, an ordinance authorizing execution of a tentative five-year agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, ASME, Local 3417, for employees with the Office of Public Works from June 1st, 2020 through May 31st, 2025.
Do I have a motion?
Motion for consent.
Second.
Motion in second for consent. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
2021-451, an ordinance authorizing payment in the amount of $50,417 to Macon County Law Enforcement Training Center for the Springfield Police Department.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion in second for consent. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
2021-452, an ordinance declaring 10 unclaimed bicycles being held in the Springfield Police Department's evidence room, to be surplus property, and authorizing the Springfield Police Department to donate said bicycles to contact ministries and Springfield Housing Authority.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Motion in second for consent. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
2021-453, an ordinance living and assessing taxes to partially fund the statutory contribution to the, of the police and fire pension funds.
Move for debate.
Second.
Motion in second for debate. Is there any discussion about this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
2021-454, an ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $200,000 for the Office of Public Works and the Office of Budget Management.
Move to debate.
Second.
Motion in second for debate. Any discussion?
Do you have an explanation of what this is all about?
For parking revenue.
Please.
This is for the Motor Vehicle Parking Fund. We had put in the budget $300,000 for a subsidy because no revenue was being collected from the hotel across the way. That's $80,000. We're not getting no money from meters and no money from parking tickets. There is personnel paid out of that fund. We have already exhausted the $300,000 in subsidy, and we brought forth a ordinance to the council for some ARPA funds for revenue replacement, which is what they're for. That's been held in committee, so this option is to do a subsidy from corporate. One way or the other, we need money in the fund if we're gonna make payroll. It's got no revenue coming in, and we have expenses. It's gotta come from somewhere.
Actually, I have a question. Mr. McCarty? So, my understanding is, is that while people aren't using the meters, we are still enforcing time limits and, you know, and things like that.
Yeah, but the ticket revenue is substantially less than what it normally is.
Okay.
Yeah. We've run the cash flows that doesn't need expenses.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Alderman Gregory?
Is there, is there any will from, from, from the council to remove that ordinance from, from committee consideration?
Didn't seem to be earlier. Does anyone?
I mean, I don't have a problem with it. I mean, I think we're gonna probably do it anyway.
So, the question is, which, which?
Alderman, holding up, Williams?
I'm sorry. Which fund would be most appropriate? I mean, would we prefer to use ARPA, or do we want to do the supplemental?
Well...
Yeah, Alderman, get it.
I don't know. I'm, you know, we're, they're saying that we have a lot of money in the, in the fund balance, you know. To me, if we, we should use fund balance over the ARPA because we can use that for other, other things. I mean, that's, I guess it's, you know, the council's decision overall, but, you know, again, we get back to, you know, we keep using fund balance, and, and eventually, if we're gonna hit a, hit a mark, we're, we're gonna be in trouble. So...
Madam Chair, am I? To answer your question, what's the most appropriate, what makes the most sense is the ARPA funds, because that's exactly what they're for. That's their intended purpose. Revenue replacement is one of the four pillars. However, in this case, it really is a six, one-half dozen other argument. You can use fund balance for anything. If you want to use $200,000 in ARPA funds for a, you know, a sewer, a drainage project, you can easily use $200,000 in fund balance for the same thing. So, it really is a six, one-half dozen argument. Doesn't really matter.
So, whatever we do, I, I think tonight, if, if we, if this ordinance, but we need to remove the other one out of committee, you know...
Was that a motion, Alderman?
Yes.
So, what, what exactly?
I would like to make a motion to take what we have tabled.
Which one?
You had a question?
Madam Chair, according to parliamentary procedure, there's an ordinance on the table that is a debate motion. You can't go to another ordinance.
Yeah, let's, let's finish this one first, and then we can talk about... So, this one is currently on debate. Certainly, we can move things out of committee, out of committee even at the meeting next week, so that might be a more appropriate time, since we've already gone through items that are being held and no one made a motion to move it.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so, we've got this one on for debate. Is there any more, are there any more questions?
Yeah, my only question is...
Yeah, Alderman Williams?
Next week, we'll have a final on this, you know, on what, how we're gonna give this money, one way or the other, correct?
Well, currently, we have this motion to take it from our fund balance on the debate agenda, so...
Okay. But, but we'll hit the table...
It's not tabled, it's held.
Next week, we'll hit the table motion first, I mean, the table ordinances first, before we get to, to this ordinance, correct?
Yes, and, and I will, and Alderwoman D'Essenzo has a good point. We didn't table that, which would require a greater number of people to vote to move it out. It's just being held in committee.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we just need one or the other. It's whatever the council's pleasure. We don't need both.
Alderwoman D'Essenzo?
Thank you. So, 2021-365 is the one you're referring to?
It's the one with ARPA funds for the Motor Vehicle Parking Fund, Fund 36.
So, that one is...
I think there were two. One was for SEVB.
Yes.
Fund 21, and the other was for Fund 36.
So, in this ordinance, you're asking for $200,000, and for the ARPA one, you're asking for $364,371.
Right. The $200,000 was the minimum that we felt like the fiscal officer in public, in public works felt like he needed to get through the year. The other one was the true revenue replacement calculation, in adherence with the Treasury guidelines. So, we think that that's how much revenue is short, through the calculation procedures that are in place, is the 354. We expect this to bleed into next year, depending on what happens with the meters and the tickets, and especially the hotel, that's $80,000 right there. So, the 354, if that comes through, that'll help next year. But, right now, we're just looking for a minimum. If we're taking it from corporate, we're looking for the minimum we feel we'd be comfortable having in order to get through the year.
So, Director, if, if 365, where we put the, if that ordinance is pulled out and passes, would you then refund the general fund $200,000?
For...
Well, if this, if both ordinances pass?
No, if both, if both ordinances pass, we likely wouldn't execute the transfer out of corporate into Fund 36.
So, we should have that discussion for next week, then, with the 365?
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions?
Thank you.
No? Thank you very much, Director.
You're welcome.
Okay, we have a motion in second for debate for 221-454. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
2021-455, an ordinance authorizing execution of a five-year agreement with News Bank Incorporated to furnish unlimited electronic access to online newspaper and obituary database service, and approving a payment in the amount not to exceed $173,501 for Lincoln Library.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion in second for consent. Any discussion? No, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
2021-456, an ordinance approving the appointment of Patricia Senor Carter to the Civil Service Commission.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion in second for debate. Any discussion? Do we have Ms. Senor in the room tonight? Would you like to come up and introduce yourself?
Don't mention Herman's name, that might hurt you.
Yes. Might be a requirement.
I'm nice.
You can mention Patty.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Senor Carter, and, of course, I'm of the Senor family. I'm married to Donald Carter, and I'm very excited that you are considering me for appointment to the Civil Service Commission. And, of course, I have my relatives here, and you know who they are, and so, that's all that I have to say. I just want to thank you for this opportunity.
Well, thank you for serving. Does anyone have any questions?
Hi.
You get off very easy, then.
Yay.
Thank you very much for agreeing to serve and for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
And I should, I should probably explain, appointments go on debate always, so that was nothing specific to this particular position.
I was asking myself.
Chair?
You have a motion in a second?
Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't even vote on it yet. Somebody, someone was telling me to move quickly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you. 2021-457, an ordinance authorizing redevelopment agreement with the authorizing payment to Floyd's Thirst Parlor for the rooftop development and kitchen expansion project located at 210-214 South Fifth Street, utilizing tax increment finance funds for an amount not to exceed $520,000 through the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Motion in second for consent. Is there any discussion?
Real quick.
Alderman Hanauer?
I'm just assuming that, that we have the Tiff funds for this, and, and I guess it, it went through, it went through regular channels, right?
Yes.
Just, just checking, don't...
Mayor, did you wanna?
I didn't say nothing.
I'm not against it, I just, just checking.
Yes, this, this project has been vetted by the ECDC, and we do have the appropriate funds in the central area of downtown Tiff District.
Right, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Alderman Redpath?
Who's the current owners of Floyd's Thirst Parlor?
Jeremy Redmeyer and Andrew Denton.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robyn.
Okay, if there are no more questions, we have a motion for consent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
2021-458, a resolution referring a petition to the Springfield Planning and Zoning Commission for public hearing and consideration proposing an amendment to Chapter 155, Section 155.045, Home Occupations.
Move to consent. Second.
Motion in second for consent. Alderwoman D'Essenzo, would you like to just briefly explain what this is about?
Yes. So, starting January 1st, a state law passed. It is the cottage law, or the home-to-market law. So, home cooks can sell their products at markets, farmers' markets, things like that. They do have to take a food handler's class, but we have to have this resolution on the books before it can go to the county Department of Public Health for them to get the required license.
Thank you very much.
So, this is just to bring us into compliance with the state law that's going into effect.
And getting ahead of the curve before January 1st.
I'm trying.
Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
2021-459, an ordinance approving addendum three to the agreement of the Land of Lincoln Economic Development Corporation, now known as Springfield-Segmond County Growth Alliance, previously authorized by ordinance 237-06-18, to provide an additional $250,000 for a total amount not to exceed $1 million, and extending the date of completion of the project until February 28th, 2022, for technical and professional services to assist with economic growth within the city.
Motion for debate.
Second.
We have a motion in second for debate. Is there any discussion?
Yeah. Anybody?
Alderman Hanauer, and then Alderman Williams?
Is, is that date correct? Is that February 28th, 2022, or is that 23? Is this for this year, or next year, or what?
This is, excuse me, this is for this year.
Okay, so, it would be...
It's in the budget, we just have to...
Right. It's already in the budget.
That is correct. It's my understanding, it, it, this is actually enacting the amount that had already been appropriated for this year. That is correct.
Alderman Williams?
Can I answer my question?
All right. And I know everyone received the email with background information from the Director. Okay, Ryan, if anyone has any questions?
I just got...
Ryan, Alderman Gregory?
If I may, thank you, Ms. Chair. My, my question would be, I, I, you know, I'm happy about this partnership, you know, I've spoken with Mr. McCarty on several occasions, just about visions for the east side, and I just, you know, just wanna press that priority to you, and, and the Growth Alliance, that, 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 you know, we, with, with many developments in this upcoming year, hopefully we got a lot of things rolling, and, 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 you know, we're gonna need you guys' help and expertise in, in, in seeing a lot of these out, so, you know.
Yeah, that, that's, in part of my report, I mentioned the agreement with Nexite for their commercial redevelopment consulting services, and in conjunction, working with the mayor and his office, we've got them focused on the harder-to-develop areas, or areas of the community that have not seen development in recent times. And so, what they'll be able to do is, they'll be able to go out and market these sites and this opportunity to national developers that would be able to come in and get interested in that. And that's very significant because they have a portfolio of sites all over the Midwest and in central Illinois, so having them under contract was a big step forward for us. It would, we really need someone under contract like that, focused on those areas, because with a staff of four, you know, we get pulled in a lot of different directions, but I wanted to see someone that had the experience in doing that, focused on that. Also, those same areas have a lot of really good or a lot of potential with incentive programs that exist in those areas and they will also be marketing those. Right now, they're doing the data analysis portion of that, so we'll make sure that we get all that information to each of your ward's about the information that they're looking to do. That's going to be a big breakthrough, I believe, and another project I'm working on right now, and the mayor will hear this report on Thursday at our board meeting, is understanding the disparities in unemployment rates and unemployed individuals that live in different areas of the city and how do we target and make sure we're communicating all the programs that are available to folks and get them connected with those opportunities. We have to communicate that in a different way, we can't just build a website and put up a bulletin board or whatever and think that we've done, or done the job to connect it. So we really need to be deliberate about working with those individuals that are unemployed, understanding the barriers, helping them get employed, helping them clear those, and then getting them trained. So we're going to need everyone's help here to be able to do that because we're going to want to, we've got to get those services into those areas that have the disparity in unemployment. We can't do it from my office at Sixth and Washington, so.
All right, let me know if you need any help.
Yep.
Thank you.
Alderman Redpath?
Ryan, we've had, we've had great growth in Springfield on the west side and the southwest side of town and, thank goodness, but Capital City Shopping Center, which adjacent to my ward and Ward three and two, has been set vacant for twenty years at certain points. That has to be a priority for this group.
It is.
We have to drive people to Dirksen Parkway and Stevenson and try to revitalize that whole area. The hotel industry there just is the only thing keeping it alive right now. We need some commercial development there that's going to bring people there. It's a, it's a nice facility, it's just that there's nothing drawn in there, so if you would make some, put some emphasis on that, that would be very helpful.
That's specifically one of the areas that I talk to them about and one of the areas they know about is the Capital City Shopping Center. If you think about all the traffic count that's going down Interstate fifty-five, near that, you have an interchange right there at Stevenson Drive, there's really good opportunities to get that redeveloped, we just have to get the word out. The nice thing about what Nexite does, just in case there's a chance that property owners or brokers could get concerned about this relationship, that it could cut into their part of the deal, and that's not how it works. Nexite is not a broker, they're not a realtor, they're not going in any way get in the middle of that. Any fee that's paid to Nexite comes from the Growth Alliance, not from the property owner, not from the broker. All it is, is just another party going out there and telling folks about development opportunities in our community. So just in case you get that question, it doesn't cut into that deal at all, just like our office, I sometimes, people wonder if we're realtors, if we get, you know, if we work on commission, we don't. We're fortunate to have great supporters like the city of Springfield, it allows us to do what we do. So just in case you get that.
We also have, along the Stevenson corridor, the old I dot building is right there across from the firehouse on Stevenson Drive and then the Days Inn property.
Right.
Those are all prime areas to bring development, to help revitalize that area for us.
I agree completely.
Thank you.
There's just, there's significant traffic count there, and the other thing that I'm excited to show you that Nexite has is what's called customer journey information. So this is powerful and scary both for people. We all carry these things around, right? Our cell phones around. They have data that can tell us, let's say Capital City, I would say Crown Plaza Hotel or McAllister's Deli on Dirksen Parkway. They would be able to tell us, not by name, but within two days of timing, they can tell us who went to that place, their demographic information, they can tell us where they went before they went there, and they can tell us where they went after they went there.
Kind of scary.
Yes, next time you accept all terms in agreement, when you download an app, you really do accept all terms and everything else that goes with it. So that's, but that's the kind of information that they can take out to national developers and say, look, we know that these groups are your target market. And what little bit I've seen about that data, most people will be surprised when they find out who's shopping where, where they're going, where they're coming from.
But, you know, there's another aspect to this market. We just approved the sports complex out behind Shields.
Right.
They are going to be required to book people in those hotels, we're going to fill those hotels, we're going to fill them, and people are going to want to go shopping and they're going to want to eat and they're going to want to do other things.
Yep, I agree.
And so that's a different aspect that we've had, that we didn't have before.
That's right, and the word to those development opportunities are, the sooner you get in, the better, because when all this stuff takes off, the price, the price goes up. So it was, I think it was really good timing to get them on board, to get them moving forward. So, and we're, you know, that's something we're funding, if any of the other communities in the county want to participate, they have to pay their own subscription fee. It's unfortunate Alderman McMenamin's not here to hear that tonight, because that's something he and I talk about a lot. It's a step towards what he wants, but the other communities have their own subscriptions, they pay their own success fees on that, but the Springfield, city of Springfield obligation is paid through, we use some of the funding that you provide to us to pay for that, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, we should work to get Nexite here, Mayor, to have a presentation sometime we'll get on board.
Thank you.
Thank you, I was going to ask about that, and we will let Alderman McMenamin know what you said.
I'm sure I'll hear from him.
I'm sure you will. Alderman Hainauer has a question too.
Yeah, thank you. You know, Ryan, you just mentioned about, you know, services to get people to work and, you know, right now, we're in a tough position here in Springfield because we've got, we've got restaurants, we've got stores, they're dying to get people. We've got restaurants and bars that have to shut down a couple of days a week.
Yeah.
Because they don't have people. And I don't think it's an issue of getting services to get people to work, people, all they have to do is go show up somewhere, be willing to work and show up for work and, I mean, you can walk into almost any restaurant here in town and get a job right now. A lot of them, you know, they, a lot of people, from what I'm hearing from the owners, is if they come to work, the work's too hard, they don't want to work as hard as what they have to work or whatever, I don't know, or they come and interview, they're offered the job, and then they never show up for the first day. And we're in a real situation where we can't, you know, we want to grow, but we can't grow if we don't have the people that want to work, and that's, that's the problem.
So we've been digging into what data exists about what's going on with the workforce in this country. There was a recent article in the Journal Register by Natalie Pierre that I thought was a really good look at that, and we have to accept a couple of different things. People since the pandemic are looking at work differently. The employees' value proposition of getting a job has changed dramatically about what things, when I say value proposition, it's what things matter to them. The other thing that we have to accept, well, first, we have a ton of workforce programs out there, and I'm, I will send you, we're compiling a complete list, I will send it to all of you, but there's still barriers to employment for people that are not employed. So when I say not employed, anyone that's considered an unemployed individual statistically is out looking for work. So what I'm talking about are people that are not connected, that are not employed at all, they're not in that unemployed number because they're, they're not actively looking for work. There are barriers, I mean, we all hear people that show up and won't work and that happens, but I truly believe there are folks out there that if we can help clear some of these barriers to employment, that we can get them ready to go into the workforce. But, but you don't take somebody that hasn't had a job for a long time and put them into a restaurant waiting tables in one step. It's unfair to them, it's unfair to the business, it's unfair to the customer, because they're not, they're not ready for that yet. But there are models out there that other places have used successfully to get people ready to work. We did it in my time in my previous community over indicator, developed programs that provided those wraparound services to help cover those barriers. For example, having access to affordable and reliable childcare is a classic barrier to getting people employed. That does not mean the city opens a daycare, but what it does mean is a community will work together and find a way to help solve that barrier. That'll make a big difference. Access to reliable and affordable transportation and off-hours, another barrier to employment. If people don't feel like they have somewhere safe to leave their kids, a lot of them are not going to work and they'll never showed up and show up in the unemployed number because they don't act, they're not actively looking for work, and so it's that disconnected group that exists. And as a community, this is something the Growth Alliance is going to engage in working on, is how do we assemble the right folks to address some of those barriers? It won't happen overnight, but I, I've seen things that have worked other places, I've been involved in things that worked, but you have to go into it with, in addressing the folks that are unemployed or not looking for work in not a judgmental way, you have to go in there and understand what their barriers are.
Not being judgmental.
You're not, nobody, I'm just.
I'm just saying, there's plenty of opportunities out there.
There are.
And it's, you know, believe me, if you want to work, there's, there's tons of restaurants and department stores and stuff like that.
You have to get people, to get people ready, I don't feel like you would all be in judgmental, I mean, it's, it's easy for, you know, when you can't get a seat at a restaurant or a store's not open, you want it to do, to get frustrated with it, we all get frustrated with it, but we have to, we're going to look past that frustration and try to understand the root cause and see what we can do as a community, so I'm sure we'll be coming back for help on that.
Alderman De Senso?
Thank you for addressing that. Who here has waited tables in their life? It's a hard job.
It's hard.
After I had been in the professional workforce for about ten years, I'm like, oh, I can go back and, you know, maybe wait some tables at Indigo and make some extra money. I about killed myself, I mean, I'm not kidding. So, you know, if people aren't used to that level of labor, then they are going to need some training and they are going to need some, some help with that, because it is not an easy job. So thank you for addressing that.
Yeah, we, this is, so in all the things in economic development that matter, the top ten most important things, I've talked about this before, always remember, the number one most important thing is available and trained workforce. Doesn't matter if you have the best tax incentives and a free site and a free building, if we don't show we have a system to get workers and we don't show we have a system that's getting workers, we will not attract and retain business. And that's why we put so much effort behind this, working on it, so.
So I have a question for you, because you hit on something that, you know, as a parent, was near and dear to me. We know that women have left the workforce, COVID and post-COVID in record numbers, and a lot of that, I believe, probably is centered around childcare. Do we have some sort of a sense of the capacity of our childcare resources in Springfield?
That's something that we're gathering, yeah, there is, I believe, the Continuum Learning and other folks have catalogued that number before.
Because it would be interesting to know what the unmet demand is too, certainly, you know, preschool-age students and then even that after-school care situation for people who have other options, but.
One of the big struggles to that point that we're trying to figure out is, we can tell you a lot of information about unemployed people, because they're registered, they're looking for work, they're getting benefits, all those kinds, it's this, this population you keep talking about that's unattached, we're having a really hard time finding data on them because they're unattached. And we are working with UIS to try to dig into that, but folks that aren't regularly interacting with other systems, it's tough to get that demographic information. So we're looking at workforce trends, we're working with a professor at UIS that's trying to gather, even he's scratching his head on it. So we're going to do the best we can.
Do you guys reach out to pediatricians?
What's that?
Do you reach out to pediatricians?
That's not a bad suggestion.
I will tell you that and that the health department, where children receive those direct services.
That's a good suggestion.
Yeah.
We'll do that.
I just know how many hours I spend in my pediatrician's office with small children.
Yeah, definitely, so.
Thank you.
We're going to do what we can, but we, this is really, really important issue that we solve as a community, and so we're working on it, but we're going to need your help. We'll be back to work with you on it, so.
Thank you, well, thank you very much for that, are there any other questions?
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Thanks for your time tonight, appreciate it, so.
Absolutely, and we have a motion on the floor for debate, it's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you. We are on to unfinished business, does anyone have any unfinished business for tonight? Alderman Redpath?
Mr. McCarty can come up and tell us where we are with the fire department proposal on the restructuring.
I assume you're talking about the consultant's report? I spoke with one of the, oh, I guess the lead consultant, a week and a half ago, he said that he had been delayed due to a variety of personal issues, but that he was aiming to get the draft to us in mid-November, so.
How long has this contract been out?
Well, they started, I can't remember when we signed the contract, I think they were onsite in July, mid-July. We always knew it would take a few months to do it, but we were really thinking that it'd be end of September, early October. But as I said, when I talked to the consultant, he said a variety of issues had popped up and they weren't able to get to it, he wasn't able to get to it.
Where are they at?
As quickly as he would want.
Where are they from?
Well, the group is part of CPSM, which is the, it's part of the, I think an offshoot of the International City Managers Association, the Center for Public Safety Management, CPSM, that's what it is.
Where are they located?
And they, and the people that are on it, it's not just one person, it's a variety of individuals who all have different pieces of the report, and I think he's the team leader for it. He's a college professor, that's part of it, but then there's some other things that have popped up from a personal standpoint I won't get into that he explained, but he did apologize and he acknowledged that they'd hoped to have it sooner, but that things had happened and that they were going to try and bust their bus together to us as quickly as possible, and he was shooting for, again, mid-November, that's where we are. And if you think back to, well, I don't think you were here at the time, but when we did the MAXIMUS study, very sort of a similar situation ten years ago, it took, I want to say that one might have taken five or six months, if I recall correctly, so it's not inordinate that this would happen, that it would take a little longer than anticipated. It takes a lot of work to put something like this together and a lot of people.
Thank you.
Thank you, we have a Alderman Redpath?
Follow up on that. Yeah, Bill, I think we need to contact them, and have we paid them yet?
We've certainly paid a portion, I don't know if we've paid it all or not, it's been a while.
They need to come, they need to get this thing to us, it's been long enough, I don't care who in their company writes the damn report, but, but the fact of the matter is, they always report, you know, it's, I think we've given them plenty of time to do it, and if they, if, you know, this is getting ridiculous.
Basically.
I mean, we've got a lot of stuff going on, we've got negotiations, we've got all kinds of stuff going on, we got, you know, we just need, we need the report.
Right.
And if they can't get it to us, then we just don't pay them.
I indicated to them that the time was of the essence, a lot of things were going on, a lot of people were waiting for it, and it was pretty clear that we were displeased that it's taking so long. Hopefully that compels them to get it done.
I just think if they don't get it to us by the, in the next week, then we tell them we're not paying them. They failed their contract, is what they've done.
I understand your frustration, we're all frustrated.
Thank you, do we have any other questions on this topic? No, thank you, Director.
You're welcome.
Is there any other unfinished business tonight? Seeing none, any new business?
I have one thing.
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just have a, more of a comment, I don't necessarily expect Public Works to respond, but I received, I promised I'd bring this up, I received a call about a situation where there was some roadwork being done out on the very edge of the city in Ward nine, and one of the contractors that was getting ready to lay the pavement was told that he had to wait, they had to wait until the temperature reached a certain degree, which is in the contract and spelled out appropriately. However, at the same time, there was work being done on Chatham Road, obviously same temperature, and they were allowed to go forward. I just asked for, asked the department, whoever is in charge of that, out on the field to just be consistent and keep those things in mind, and like I said, I just promised I'd pass that along, so I don't necessarily think you have to respond, Director, but just, I see you writing it down, thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Purchase?
I just wanted to give a shout-out to Public Works for the event that we had this past Saturday with Evans Recycle and the pumpkin smash, it was awesome, we had a lot of kids turn out and we got to relieve some stress on our pumpkins.
And recycle them.
Yeah, and recycle them.
And compost them.
Did you smash one?
Hmm?
Did you smash one?
Mm-hmm, very hard.
Right.
Alderman De Senso?
Thank you, Madam Chair, this is a problem many of us face and it's, it's a frustration for me because I have a problem property, nuisance property in my ward. Public Works is involved, the police have been involved, there's been twenty-two calls for service. At what point does it just kick in and we start a nuisance abatement on a property like this? There was a shots-fired incident there last Wednesday, you know, this is, obviously, Juan has been involved, thank you, Juan, I appreciate it, the landlord doesn't care, you know, at what point does a mechanism just kick in? Oh, it's also Section eight, so they have to meet certain requirements to even live in this property, which they've obviously violated. They're terrorizing the neighborhood, they, you know, people are upset, there's kids over there, like I said, this is not an uncommon problem, a lot of us have dealt with this. But I just think there should be some mechanism that kicks in with either Public Works or the police that recognizes this property as an issue and starts nuisance abatement automatically.
The mayor?
I've got a question real quick.
The mayor asked.
Anyway, with regards to that, we should use all those approaches, Public Works, with regards to violations, police, with regards to illegal activities, with the housing authority, I'll talk to Jackie Newman tomorrow about if they are the residents creating the problem.
They are.
And there are certain parameters they have to uphold for Section eight, so if they're breaking that violation, then those, that's the three prongs that we could try, corporatist counsel, I don't know if there's anything else, but we should be, that's what we're trying to do on businesses and everybody else to try to bring mitigation to these issues.
And I'm not blaming the police, I'm not blaming Public Works, I just feel like, you know, if everyone's talking to each other and everyone knows this is an issue, this property is an issue, what are we doing? I mean, we're failing to get these people out of the neighborhood and stop, stop the activity.
Alderman Hainauer?
Well, and I guess my question is, and I couldn't, does a nuisance ordinance also include, I know it included issues, you know, building issues and things like that, does it also, did we include like issues like this where, where crime or anything, that's not part of our nuisance ordinance, right?
No, nuisance abatement is with the Springfield Police Department and there have to be so many calls for service in a certain amount of time to be able to abate this property of the nuisance tenants.
Right.
You know, sometimes the actual homeowners, and that's a little different, but these happen to be, it's a rental property.
Yes, okay, I just had that question.
I think some of the things you just said and the mayor had stated too as well is actually occurring. Public Works has had multiple violations of the property, as you know, and we have worked in concert with our law enforcement team as well, and as a result, from my understanding just yesterday, that person's moving out within the next couple of weeks. Anyway, there'll be a large stockpile of some trash items that we said, that they're letting us know when they're going to put them out there and all that, to make sure that those things are taken care of. Some of the activities were factual, some of them weren't, but in this case, from my understanding, I had to talk into, I actually had a visit with the particular home resident in that particular area just a day or so ago, I'm getting my dates mixed up, but within this week, we are on just day previous day, yesterday, one of the two. And that, from my understanding, the person is now moving on to another residence out of state.
Thank you.
And just to add that, not talking about the, I know which one you're talking about, but not to speak specifics about that.
Yes.
So, what gets brought to our attention, sometimes it's brought together by an officer, sometimes it's brought by a citizen complaint, sometimes it's brought by an Alderman, that's how we get to know about the issues there. And then we address it, when we try to abate it, the first step in the process obviously is to gather the evidence, and as Mr. Harris alluded to, sometimes it's factual, sometimes it's not factual, and we have to have documented proof. And then once we have that documented proof, typically what we do, a letter is generated by legal, it is sent to them requesting a meeting with the property owner, typically we give about two weeks for them to respond and get back with us, then we meet with them and give them an opportunity to abate the problem. Then we meet with them and give them an opportunity to abate the problem. They have to draft a plan that I approve as the Chief of Police. Typically, after we meet, we give them two weeks to submit that plan, so you're talking about 28 days to 30 days, and that general thing. Then, obviously, if we approve the plan, we give them an opportunity to implement the plan. Sometimes that's 30 to 60 days, depending on legal's recommendation, or our recommendation on how cooperative and laws are acting in good faith, and they're trying to abate it, and it goes down that process. If they don't abate the issue, then we come back to legal, usually within that timeframe, and say, hey, they've made no progress, they've done nothing, this is, we do a follow-up meeting, and then we send it to legal. So it's not an overnight process by no means, but that's how the process works.
I've had several of these, so I'm aware of how the process works.
And most of the time, I will say that the landlords, when we reach out to them, they abate the problem pretty quickly. Not always, but they do pretty good. Sometimes we have landlords who refuse to cooperate, and then we have to go the other process.
Thank you, Chief.
Alderman Gregory?
While you was up there, Chief, I was just going to say that, that issue that we talk about...
Ran away too quickly.
Chief, you ain't got to come back up, I'm just saying, that issue I always call you about over there with, under the same situation of, you know, nuisance abatement, we've dealt with it before, but, you know, some of those issues still do go on. I ride by all the time, and I get frustrated every time I see it, because I know they're selling us a bunch of crap. I'm getting there, I'm tired, I'm almost ready to go over there and just sit there and videotape and show you, so y'all don't think I'm lying, but I know, you know, I appreciate it.
Juan? Yes, sure.
I do want to let you know that I reached out to Springfield Housing. You are correct, this is a Section 8 house, so they're doing an investigation. So if they find something illegal with the tenants, they can remove the voucher, but they can afford the landlord to kick them out. So basically, the Springfield Housing pays a portion to the rent, because it's a federal program. So if they decide not to give those funds, then they will have to pay the whole amount, then between the landlord and the person.
I understand. And, you know, I don't want anyone to be without a home, but if you're going to live in a neighborhood and in a community, there is a certain, you know, code of conduct and behavior that has to be adhered to. And when we have tenants not doing that, it's a problem.
Yeah, well, I will give you, I will keep you posted.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Juan.
Thank you.
Do we have any other new business, Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple announcements. There's a Small Business Seminar, Office of Plan Economic Development with Justin Peterson and Springfield Black Chamber. And that's tomorrow, over at the Salvation Army Community Center, 1600 East Clearlake. And the topic will be building your business credit score on, and a new low-interest micro loan program, and that's at 6:00. And then, just a reminder, city offices are closed Thursday for Veterans Day. We encourage everybody to go downtown for the parade, which starts at 10:00 at 9th and Capitol, and proceeds down to the Capitol Building. And then also, there's a COVID vaccination clinic this Friday from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and that's put on by the city in partnership with the Illinois Department of Public Health and the YMCA, and that's going to be at the YMCA, located at 601 North 4th Street. And they'll be giving all the shots for those 12 years old and older. And it's for Moderna and Pfizer booster shots, as well as the first and second doses of the Moderna and Pfizer and Johnson &amp; Johnson. And then a follow-up clinic will be Friday, December 3rd, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the YMCA as well. Thank you. Oh, one last thing, sorry. There is, everybody remembers, we're doing that strategic plan, part of that, there's going to be a homeless summit with regards to that, and that's put on by the Continuum of Care in conjunction with the consultant, Gina Lathan, as well as Homebase. And that's going to be Monday, this Monday, via Zoom, from 12:00 to 1:30. And then Tuesday, from 8:30 to 10:00, will be at the Christ the King Parish Center. And then from noon to 1:30, will be at Lincoln Library. And then Tuesday, from 6:30 to 8:00, it'll be at Union Baptist Church.
Thank you, Mayor. And actually, you reminded me, Douglas Avenue Methodist Church is also sponsoring a vaccination clinic this Saturday from 1:00 to 5:00. They're going to have, again, Pfizer, Moderna, Johnson &amp; Johnson, first, second shots, boosters, so will not have shots for children. My understanding is mostly people are getting those with appointments right now, so, thank you. We have no more new business. I understand, Clerk, we had two people sign up to speak tonight?
Uh, one.
Oh, just one, okay.
For next week.
Okay.
Bill Basket.
Bill, come on down.
My name is Bill Basket. I am the chairperson for the Coalition of Inner City Older Neighborhoods, ICON, and I live on North 3rd Street. Thank you, Mayor Langfelder, and city council members for allowing me to speak. ICON is concerned about amendments to ordinances not being available for citizens to view before the city council votes on them. Specifically, during last week's consideration of ordinance 2021-390, there were two amendments not available prior to the meeting. The contents of the ordinances were very quickly summarized by Corporation Council, but the full text was not made public. There have been many other instances when ordinances are passed with amendments not available for citizens to view before the vote. Some of those amendments have changed Springfield's municipal law in important ways. We believe that input of informed, educated citizens is important in local governance. How can citizens be well-informed about issues when important amendments are not published? Tonight, ICON is speaking for all concerned Springfield citizens who have a stake in decisions that affect our lives, our property, our businesses. In future, amendments to ordinances should be posted on the city clerk's website for public viewing before the city council votes. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Alderman Gregory?
We do, I just want to say, I agree with you, we want to get the information out, we do value, you know, your input, and any citizen's input, but we do sometimes make, you know, amendments on the floor, and, you know, so I get it, I'm sure they'll try to put them out there the best way you can. I totally understand what you're saying, but sometimes we do do things on the fly and very quickly, so I just wanted...
I understand that, too, Alderman. I see your point, too.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Bill, thank you, Bill. Oh, Bill, come back.
I'm going to take, thank you, Madam Chair, I'm going to take it one step further. In the four years I've been sitting here, I've been asking for presentations to be listed on the agenda before they come to the city council, because we don't know what's, I mean, we don't even know before we get here, what we're going to listen to that evening. Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't. So I think it's very important for the public to know what's going to be discussed, you